Before we get started, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Morgan family. Thank you. Call this March 10th, regular session in order. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero. Also need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Hammond?
Second.
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Passes five zero. Recognitions, Mr. Cawcote.
Thank you, Mr. Ransome. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. We've got a lot of folks to recognize this evening, so if you'll come forward at this time. As you do so, I will point out, this week's art display is provided by students from Oconee County Middle. These images are on display here tonight and will be on the hallway panels throughout the month. Their instructor is Chad Willingham. First this evening, I would like to note that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. Oconee County Schools, thanks to each of you for your dedicated service, your commitment to students, staff, and community is invaluable and deeply appreciated. We appreciate your support and your efforts in shaping the future of our district. Thank you all, and please enjoy your tokens of gratitude from all the schools. The board will recognize the March Pursuit of Excellence Award winner for student services, Dove Creek Elementary's Paige Montgomery. She is receiving a $50 Visa gift card and a golf umbrella provided by Peach State Federal Credit Union, additional gift cards from Chops and Hops, and Rosie's Hometown Meats, and a commemorative plaque from Oconee County Schools. Ms. Paige, this is part of your nomination form. Paige exemplifies the highest standards of professionalism in every aspect of her role, and she is a valuable asset to our school community. Her dedication to her work with students, parents, and coworkers is evident in everything she does, and her positive influence is felt by all who interact with her. Paige approaches all interactions with professionalism. She treats each individual with kindness, respect, and patience, and creates an environment of trust and collaboration. Her work with students is nothing short of extraordinary. She is not only deeply caring, but also invests herself in their growth and success, always going the extra mile to ensure students feel supported and valued. She consistently embodies the values and standards of our school, serving as a role model for others in her dedication to both personal and professional excellence. Her passion for helping children, her commitment to continuous learning, and her exceptional care for the students and staff make her an exemplary educator and colleague. The March Pursuit of Excellence winner, Paige Montgomery. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 GMEA All-State Chorus Awardees from North Oconee High, Zane Taylor and Lily Taylor. Their advisor is Renee Costigan.
They're still singing somewhere?
Okay. The board will recognize the 2025 GMEA All-State Chorus Awardees from Malcolm Bridge Middle, Alyssa Betta Scalia and Matthew Baxley. The advisor is Jordan Ritchie. The board will recognize the 2025 GMEA All-State Band Awardees from Malcolm Bridge Middle, Gabriel Lim, Emerson McMakin, Neve Mishra, Colin York, and Allison Jeong. The advisor is Wes York. The board will now recognize the 2025 GMEA All-State Band Awardees from North Oconee, Ava Castleberry and John Casey Matheson. The advisor is Scott Smith. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 GMEA All-State Band Awardees from Oconee County High, Josiah Owens, Micah Taylor, Parks Powell, and Porter Welch. The advisor is Mark Provost. Next, the board will recognize the 2425 Beta Club State Awardee from Malcolm Bridge Middle, Bonnie Shin, who placed second in eighth grade math. The advisor is Stacy Waters. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 GHSA Class 1 through 3A One-Meter Diving State Third-Place Finisher, Eleanor Pichetto from Oconee County High. The coaches are Derek Barr and John Wilson. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 GHSA Class 4A Swimming State Third-Place Finisher from North Oconee, Joseph Ryan in the 100 Butterfly and 200 IM, and Tessa Steger in the 500 Freestyle. The coaches are Nicole Omara and Scott Burrell. And that concludes recognitions.
Next, we have Points of Pride with Oconee County Middle School. Welcome, Ms. Poss.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. I'm Anne Poss. I'm the principal of Oconee County Middle School, and I get the opportunity to interact with an incredible group of students and staff each and every day. I inherited a school culture and identity built around connect, serve, and impact. Tonight, we want to just scratch the surface of the amazing ways we live this out every day at our school.
My name is Brian Robertson. I'm one of the assistant principals at Oconee Middle. Connect, serve, and impact is so much more than a motto at our school. We build what we do around these three words. Tonight, you'll hear from students and a staff member that embody connect, serve, and impact. Students are finding ways to connect through various clubs and organizations, and we will highlight the Hero Club, where students that may not cross paths during the school day can find connections with each other across all ability levels. Ms. Blau has headed up our seventh grade service project for the last two years, giving students an opportunity to serve beyond the walls of our school. Our students are making an impact inside and outside of the classroom, and we will spotlight our FBLA state champion, Bo Taylor. To wrap things up, we have what we like to call an almost finished product. Mason Tiller was nominated by a teacher as a student who lives out connect, serve, and impact.
Hello, my name is Piper Caruthers, and this is my good friend Gabby. Hero Club obviously stands for helping everyone reach out, but to me, Hero Club is something that I feel happy to participate in every day. I want to say that the Hero Club is something that brings me so much closer to people who I never would have met before I joined. The club has helped me connect to students in more ways than I ever could have imagined. Helping everyone reach out. Our Hero Club has profoundly impacted my life by fostering connections I never thought were even possible. Through their events, I've met people from different places who share the same activities and hobbies as me. This incredibly supportive community has encouraged me to engage in meaningful conversations, share my thoughts, and learn from others. Whether it's through Wednesday meetings or social events like this one, I feel empowered to reach out, build friendships, and make a connection to someone new in my life every day. Hero Club has played a significant role in strengthening my friendship with Gabby. Through the club's activities and events, we found common interest and shared experiences that deepened our friendship. The inclusive environment of Hero Club encouraged us to open up, share our thoughts, and build a trust no one else can break. As a result, our friendship has flourished, and I cherish the moments we've created together through this amazing community that I am proud to call my school, OCMS.
Hi, I'm Annie Blau. Our goal as educators is not just to teach facts, but to help students grow into kind, responsible, and globally aware citizens. We want them to see how their learning connects to the real world. In seventh grade social studies, students learn about regions affected by war and displacement. They hear about children whose education has been disrupted and ask, "How can we help?" Last year, our students took action by organizing a school supply drive for children right here in Georgia. They collected backpacks, notebooks, and other essentials, donating them to the International Rescue Committee in Atlanta. This experience opened their eyes. They saw that kids their age face big challenges but are rebuilding their lives. More importantly, they learned that even small efforts can make a big impact. We are proud of our students and grateful for the school board's support. By connecting learning to action, we help students not just understand the world, but improve it.
Hello, my name is Bo Taylor. I am in the sixth grade, and I go to Oconee County Middle School. Recently, I represented Oconee County Middle School FBLA for the annual Georgia State Conference in Columbus, Georgia. I decided to participate in the career research project and presentation. I used the learning skills I learned in FBLA and the learning skills I learned from my teachers. This helped me to win first place at the state conference. This also impacted OCMS because I was invited to move on to the FBLA National Conference to represent our school in Anaheim, California, which is nearly 2,000 miles away. Also, I'm super excited to share this impact at the national conference. It is a great opportunity to show my public speaking skills. These things are the reason I am here today at the board meeting to tell you how I impacted my school and how my school has impacted me.
My name is Mason Tiller, and I'm in eighth grade at Oconee County Middle School. Tonight, I want to share a few things that have had a strong effect on my experience at our school. Things that make it a great place to learn and grow by connecting, serving, and impacting others in the community. Of course, academics are important and should always be taken seriously, but there are things that I and other students have found that are also important, both inside and outside the classroom for our future success. First of all, I think making strong connections with your teachers is important. Usually, if I'm able to have a good relationship with my teacher, it's easier for me to learn. For example, my science teacher is also my wrestling coach. Spending time developing that bond outside the room helped me learn inside the room. I notice that my highest grades are usually in the classes where I have good connections with my teachers. I also like being at activities like Beta Club because they offer opportunities to serve others outside my school building. Just last week, I helped kids get out of their cars at the primary school with Beta Club. I enjoyed handing out high fives, helping them with their backpacks, and complimenting them on their team day outfits. It's nice to know that I could be a bright spot in their day. Putting together the care bags for OARC was great, too, because I know they're going to families who need them. It's a good feeling to help with things that directly benefit people in our community. Finally, I have the opportunity to impact others through leadership. This has really helped me grow this year. I've experienced this through football, and my dad always told me that if you're in the back, you lead from the back, and so that's what I did. When I was made team captain, it changed my point of view. I've also never been really one to get up in front of a group and talk, but in my classes, I've learned that if I volunteer to go first, it shows other people that they can do it, and it's not so hard. I've learned that stepping up as a leader can help other people be successful. People my age can have a hard time balancing school, athletics, and other outside activities, but putting in the work to be a well-rounded student through developing good relationships with teachers, exploring service clubs, and taking advantage of leadership opportunities is worth it. Goods, grades are cool, but it's just also important to be in part of other groups and activities at which you work with people in all walks of life, because that's what will help you be successful and adult. And that's what I feel like I have the opportunity to do at Oconee County Middle School.
Good evening. My name is Josh Martz, and this is my first year at OCMS as an assistant principal. As a newcomer to the building and the Braves family, I've been blessed to see and be a part of the great work that's going on here. Tonight, you've been given a small glimpse into what I get to see every day. In a world where we can be anything we want, we ask our staff and students to be brave, to find new ways to connect, serve, and impact. As we focus daily on the many tasks at hand, we also look to the future and explore ways we can continue to be intentional about these three areas of focus. Next year, we're excited about working with our grade levels, clubs, organizations, and sports teams to develop and carry out service projects. Our hope is that these opportunities to serve will help our students connect with their peers and their teachers while also making an impact on our school and our local community. Dr. Branch, I think we may need to formally request a 30-minute time slot for next year's Points of Pride. Thank you all for allowing us to share about the things that make us proud to be called OCMS Braves.
Next, we have Business Services. Mr. Adams?
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. The Business Service Report for March 10th, 2025 contains seven items of information and no action items for tonight's meeting. The first item of information is our February cash balance report. As of February 28th, the closing cash balance is a 1.90 decrease over last month. State funding projections are currently stable, but we are still monitoring what's going on downtown at the Capitol this session and monitoring any changes to any funding levels that may come in the coming months. Our cash balance for February is strong, and we are still well positioned to meet our financial obligations. Item of information number two is our vendor payments for the month of February. We paid over 423 vendors, $1.1 million for the month. Our third item of information is our February budget report. Revenues and expenditures would be expected to be at 66%, and we are currently showing us at 66%. This includes that we are on target for the period and maintaining a well-balanced financial position. Again, we will continue to monitor these figures closely as we move forward. Item information number four is our ELOS collections report. We have a decrease over last month of 25.49 in collections, but a 2.60% increase over February of last year. And usually this time of year, you have a tendency to see this slowdown in the collections based on the holiday lag and just the shorter months also. Our next item of information is our ELOS six report. The revenues and expenditures have been updated through February, end of February. Our sixth item of information is our federal funds report for February. Just a reminder again that these are on a lag. We'll get reimbursed as these come through throughout the fiscal year as they're grant-based. That's how this usually works with the feds. You just get a little slower on the response there. And our seventh item of information is our total benefit statement. The board provides additional compensation to each employee in Oconee County through the form of employer pay contributions that include retirement and health insurance. This total benefit statement is a summary of the value-added compensation provided by the board for the employees' various benefits through December of 2024. The example you have is a T5, and it's just an example of all the actual benefits that they received for the whole calendar year of 2024. And that concludes my presentation unless the board has any questions.
I have one question, Peter. So that last page you had there, the average teacher, I'm assuming that's the average teacher that's a T5, is that right?
Yes, sir. Average teacher for T5.
That's a good number to use right there. $107,000 on average is what every teacher...
For that level, yes. Yep. It'll vary as the salaries go up. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we have Communications to the Board. Mr. Cawcote.
Mr. Ransome, we have two citizens sign up to address the board this evening. Before I invite them up, I'll read this. Policies BCBI and BCBI-R1 state that only Oconee County residents or school system employees may address the board, and that members of the public shall conduct themselves in a respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. The board allows three minutes for those who sign up prior to the meeting. Please state your name, address, and topic. The board requests that you refrain from making any disparaging remarks about school system personnel. Generally, there will be no response to comments or questions posed by citizens at the meeting. All comments and questions will be taken under advisement by the board. However, any board member shall be free to respond and make public comments if he or she elects to do so. To any citizen wishing to provide documents for board members, please submit them to the Director of Communications before the meeting or prior to addressing the board. Please remain at the podium during your public comment time. Our first citizen is Katie Vickery.
Good evening. My name is Katie Vickery. I live at 1145 Summerfield Lane. Six months ago, I made the difficult decision to unenroll my boys from Rocky Branch Elementary. My son was previously in a classroom where disruptive behavior was common. Serious threats were made, objects were thrown, and evacuations became routine. I only learned about these incidents because my son told me. Over time, his anxiety about school grew, and so did my concern. After the shooting at Appalachia, I met with the principal to ask what I believed was a straightforward question. How are threats assessed, managed, and communicated to parents? Rather than receiving a clear answer, I was dismissed, scolded, and told to trust the system rather than my own experiences. Instead of transparency, I was met with defensiveness. At that moment, I realized something deeply concerning. If I couldn't even ask how threats are handled, how could I trust that my children were safe? I sought answers through every appropriate channel. I emailed school and district leadership. Yet I received no clear response, no solutions, and ultimately silence. When my emails went unanswered, I filed an open records request for basic documents any parent should have access to. The response: Parent handbook, no records. Behavioral threat assessment, no records. Parent communication policies, no records. School safety plan, completely withheld. The fact that these records do not exist or are being withheld is alarming. And let me be clear, the law does not... And let me be clear, the law does not prohibit you from sharing a redacted version of a school safety plan. That claim is simply false. Tonight, I'm asking the board to choose to be bothered. Be bothered that parents are left in the dark. Be bothered that transparency is treated as an inconvenience, not a responsibility. Be bothered that behavior issues at Rocky Branch are escalating. This is not an isolated incident. Investigate why Rocky Branch's discipline approach differs from other schools in the district. You may be aware that Gwinnett County Superintendent was recently removed, and one of the key reasons cited was the failure of the same restorative practices being used here. Ask, ask why amazing teachers are leaving. Why does leadership refuse to answer basic questions about safety and communication? Are we more concerned with maintaining the illusion of great schools or actually ensuring them? My family's experience is not unique. Parents across this district share the same concerns. Ask them. See if the answers you find align with what I am saying tonight. And most importantly, remember who you serve, because once the curtain is pulled back, the truth is impossible to ignore. Thank you.
I have a quick question in response to that. Thank you, Ms. Vickery, for your time today. And, you know, that's a great question, and this is the place for answers. So I'm curious about what is the policy if a threat is in a student's classroom? How is that typically communicated to parents?
Depends on the situation of the classroom experience. And so every situation is different, and the availability for the information that we can share is different based on those situations.
Would you say that's a frequent issue, or is it not as frequent as people think?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next citizen is Ian Taylor.
Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, y'all. So we're not talking about budgets tonight for a change, huh? I just have a request for you. I'm gonna ask, I've been wanting to do this for a couple of years, and I've just never got around to it because we've always had something more important going on. But is there any chance that you all could please publish an agenda with the details of what's going on in the meeting ahead of the meeting? Typically, what's on your Assembly website is exactly what was outside tonight, which is unusual, is just a list of a placeholder meeting. There's nothing actually what's going on there. I do know that on a Friday afternoon at about 5 o'clock, the local newspapers in the area get an email with the agenda, slightly a little bit more embellished than the basic points. I mean, that would be relatively simple to put onto your website or tweet it out, Face Space, whatever the communication department wants to use, but being on the website. As I've said before, we are about to get walloped. I mean, and I know we are, we're gonna get walloped with a huge tax increase this year. It would be nice if you all could publish, so that people in the county could actually come and understand what it is that we're gonna be paying taxes for. But that's basically it, what I've got for tonight. Please, just think about publishing that agenda. It's a zero-cost deal, and if you want transparency with the county, you know, let them know what you're gonna talk about. Thanks, y'all.
Mr. Branch, that concludes public communication.
Thanks, Stephen. Next, we have action items. Start, Branch.
Yes, sir. First up, we have a local ward training plan form, and you'll see that that's been amended. That is to include our two new members, and so we did have to file that with our outgoing members, Ms. Argo and Mr. Burgeson. So would recommend the board approve the new amended plan.
Thank you, Dr. Branch. I need a motion. Ms. Parrish, Mr. Tool, all in favor? Pass this 5-0.
Okay, up next, we have three field trips. If it pleases the board, we can take all three at one time. So we'd recommend the approval of items B, C, and D, all field trips, to be approved as presented.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Pass this 5-0.
Okay, our next item is the White Fleet replacement cycle that Dr. White and his team have been working on for some time, and so appreciate the good work that they did to put this together. Would recommend that be approved as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Pass this 5-0.
Okay, also from our operations staff and the good work of Dr. White and Mr. Ricketson, the replacement of the Oconee County High School practice field lights to make them competition quality, and we'd recommend those lights be approved as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Pass this 5-0.
Okay, two left. We have a GODE five-year facility plan resolution. As you know, Fred presented that last week, talking through those points, and we would recommend that be approved as presented.
I have a couple of questions on this, if I may. Dr. Branch, could you help? When I pulled up the document from our work session last week where it talks about the five-year facility plan, tabulation of priorities, and we have several different columns out there, one of those is support, one of those is additions, one of those is renovations, one of those is modifications out there, and I know we've looked at this in prior years, could you just refresh me on what falls underneath support, additions, renovations, and modifications?
Yes, sir. I see that Fred is fearful of my answer, so he is taken to the podium to provide that expertise. If it pleases the board, I'll ask Fred just to explain those categories for us.
Fred?
So the different categories, the additions would be the first thing you would notice. So for North Oconee High and Oconee High, it says seven units for additions at North and one for Oconee High. If we were to build additions for these additional instructional units, we would have to have support space to go along with them, which is corridors, restrooms, mechanical closets, that kind of thing. So that's what the support spaces are, and they fund both the additions and the support spaces if we were so choose to do that. Renovations are typically things that you see in the building. It's paint, it's carpet, it's flooring, it's lighting, intercoms, whiteboards, those type of things. And modifications, lastly, are more of the infrastructure in the building. That would be roofs, car canopies, kitchen equipment, air conditioning equipment, that kind of thing.
So this would, it would be fair to say, in some of these, it's gonna be bringing current deferred maintenance items that HVAC system gets old over time and eventually needs to be replaced.
Correct.
I may be oversimplifying that, but...
The way it works, you'll notice that Dove Creek Elementary and Dove Creek Middle have zero across the board. The reason is, is because they haven't reached the age to start earning entitlement dollars from the state. So North Oconee has the most because it's 20 years old and it's reached that key for each one of those items, renovations, modifications, have reached that point.
And as I understand it from prior years on this, this is not a document that says this is absolutely what's going to happen at every single school. This is a, when we look at the separate schools, these are the items in which we can request funding from the state for, should this body approve those items outside of any small items at individual schools which fall underneath operational things such as if a lock sticks, somebody needs to be able to swap the door out or the lock out?
Yes, sir. This list is only a list of items we're eligible to receive funding for. Nothing, there's not been a request at all asking for funding for any of these things. We're simply eligible for these dollars.
Okay. And then, this would be the same sort of plan as I think back to your construction updates that you provide every month. So I went back and pulled just the current construction items that are out there, and I see we have Dove Creek Middle School from a new construction out there, and I think we've already requested reimbursement, the final reimbursement on it. Phase 2 items at the primary school and elementary school and the roof at the high school, we've requested that reimbursement. Some tail-end items here at the ISC, which are continuing to be worked on. The district-wide freezer and cooler generation installation, I know you've been working on for the last couple of years, continues to be ongoing and look forward to seeing that wrapped up. Rocky Branch Elementary School has a renovation modification, I believe that reimbursement request has been submitted as well. And then the practice field lighting that we just voted on. So we really have three items out there. Anything else that I am missing that's in process?
No, sir, that is a complete list.
Okay. Sorry, I made a few notes on this just in advance, wanna make sure I'm getting it. And then, when this plan is submitted, is this set in stone? Can it be modified? Are we, as a governing board, able to look at what goes on in our community and our schools to make changes if something becomes eligible a year from now, two years from now? Because I seem to recall we may have done an extension on the prior plan.
Yes, this is a planning document that can be modified through the process. This is just, as we said, a required state document, and we can modify it at any time with the action of the board.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I hear you about, you know, this doesn't mean seven units are being built at North Oconee necessarily by seeing this, but I did wanna ask, is there a need for some of these additions or improvements at this point, or do we foresee that need over the next five years?
I think we certainly, by listing North Oconee Facility Staff is telling you that that is the building that is most ready for an update of renovations, modifications. As you recall, most of those buildings have been touched through our last several years, and so that is certainly why it's first. The additions that are there are just showing that that is there, that we earned that entitlement. Staff will continue to review enrollment and review whether those additions would be necessary in a timely fashion coming forward. But certainly, it's good that we're earning that. I think the other thing that, as I talked with Dr. White and Mr. Ricketson, is that, you know, in another year or two, you're gonna earn even more money in terms of entitlement. So this is not a frozen document. This is a document that continues to add, and so as we see continued growth, there may be nine classroom units there, or there may be two somewhere else, things of that nature. Would that be correct, Fred?
Absolutely.
And what effort is there to have equal treatment, I guess, to all the schools to ensure that over time, each school is touched in an appropriate amount?
Yeah, I think if you look at the history of the facility planning and the work that's been done, there's a tremendous amount of effort to make sure that every school is touched and renovated and updated, and I believe every building has been touched in some form or fashion in the last five years. Every single one's had something.
Great, thank you. Couple of follow-up items on that. So on that same vein, I think I heard you say that the school administration has input on this as well. So this is not just, it's not just people that sit in this building, it's the people that are boots-on-the-ground every day.
Absolutely. Fred, Brian, do you wanna talk about the walkthroughs you guys have been doing?
Yes, sir. So every semester, we visit every school in the county, and we talk with the principal, we walk the building, we walk every mechanical closet, every data closet, every kitchen, freezer, cooler, just to make sure that, you know, we are not deferring any maintenance and upkeeping what we do have. And that also gives us an idea in order to put this list together as far as the tabulation of priorities.
Okay. And then also, just to be clear, so this is a request that would come from the state, and then, of course, there would be local dollars that would have to go along with this should any of these items, should we decide that any of these items move forward?
Absolutely. To earn the entitlement, I think typically we say we have to spend about 75% to get 25% of the funding. So it is definitely, it's better than many states in our country, and we appreciate the earned entitlement dollars, but there is still a significant local impact.
Thank you.
I need a motion on the facilities plan resolution.
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Pass this 5-0.
Okay, our last action item is advanced placement psychology curriculum, and you heard from Ms. Whitaker last week about that, and so we would recommend placing that on the table for public review.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Pass this 5-0. We do have a need to go into executive session. I need a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Need a second?
I'll take it.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Mr. Tool? Pass this 5-0.